I would like to call this meeting to order. Today is Thursday, January 10th, 7:00 PM. Our invocation tonight will be done by Mary Helen Teakin.
Henry Carter, we ask for your guidance for this council with wisdom and for open hearts, open minds, to be able to lead this community in the right direction, treat people fairly, to undertake projects and business that is good for our community. We ask also for the guidance of our state leaders, as they are now in session, and for our federal leaders. It's a big, tough job, and we can't do it without your help. We certainly need your help.
We have established a corps, Councilman Miller, Councilman Morones, Councilwoman Castillo, Councilman Guerrero, and Councilman Rodriguez. Now will everyone please stand for the U.S. pledge allegiance to Texas study.
United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Okay, before we begin, I would like to present item 4A first, which is a proclamation, which reads... "Consideration in action to approve Lions Club Midwinter Conference proclamation." Andy and myself. Ms. Pollak, would you read that proclamation for us, please? Ms. LaWanis, would you like to come forward?
Whereas the Forestville Lions Club of Texas District 2A2 is a proud organization, and whereas the Forestville Lions Club is a member in good standing to the international Lions Club community, and whereas the Forestville Lions Club is a great organization that gives back to our community, and whereas the Lions Club is holding their midwinter cabinet meeting in the city of Forestville, whereas we would like to welcome the visiting Lions Club members, and whereas the midwinter cabinet meeting is to be held on January 18th and 19th, 2013, now therefore, my Mayor Diana Garza, by virtue of authority vested in me, do hereby proclaim January 18th and 19th, 2013, as Lions Club Midwinter Cabinet Meeting Weekend in the city of Forestville, and ask that all residents of the community join me in honoring the Forestville Lions Club as well as the visiting Lions Club members.
Ms. LaWanis, would you like to say a few words?
I always like to say a few. No, I just want to thank everyone. I really think it's great because this is the first time that, well, the third time we've had a midwinter conference, they've here, and the Lions of District 2A2 have always considered Forestville a very friendly and a very warm and inviting place. And so they've asked us again to be our, because the third cabinet meeting we've had during the last five years, and so we're very honored to be able to do that. And I think Jason Cowley was our president at one time when we had the first cabinet meeting here, and the Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Bykon, he's always been very gracious as a chamber at that time to coordinate with the Lions Club. We do a lot of service organizations, our motto is "We serve." Bill Wilson is also a Lion. So we have a lot of Lions in the room. It's a wonderful organization, and we do thank you for the help that we get to the community. So thank you very much.
Councilman, can I have a motion?
Oh, I'm sorry. I want a photo with her. I have to move.
Mayor, can I make a motion to approve the Lions Club Midwinter Conference proclamation?
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. Fights you.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate it. Lions, appreciate it so much. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you. Yes, it is.
I know I have a show. I know I have a show.
Thank y'all so much. Appreciate it.
Okay, now on to old business. Councilman, you have your minutes in your package. Item 1A is "Consideration in action to approve minutes from the workshop of November 27th, 2012." Can I can have a motion?
Andy, I've just got a question. On the slogan, the new slogan, I must have missed it. When did, when did, did you say that sometime in your presentation? Because I don't remember.
The other council members. Remember?
You didn't?
To the secretary there, it's like.
Okay, now is this something that I forgot? One part of this, you know, we're going to be changing it or is this one?
This is a memory or a slogan that has been with us for two years now, we've got this slogan, and I've done a, a presentation to the employees so that they could understand what that means, and I have pledged that I would ask to be on all civic organizations' agenda so I can go around town letting them know what the city employees have in mind of their part in organizing.
Mayor? There was a question on the floor.
I am sorry. That's okay. What is the slogan "I built"? "I built you."
Madam Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the workshop of November 27th, 2012.
All in favor? Okay, motion carries. 401.
Why was the same question?
The same. Okay. Thank you. 401.
I'm sorry, is that the city slogan?
"I built."
It pertains to the employees.
Oh, okay.
It's the employees. But I will go around the community and, and do the presentation as to what the city.
Can you tell them just a little bit, because I think they're questioning?
I don't have it with me.
Okay.
But I would be more than that to resolve the whole problem.
Mr. Johnson, does that replace teamwork?
Yes.
Okay. Excuse me, I think the reason why I'm questioning, it just doesn't sound complete. It sounds like, yeah, the grammar, "I built," you built what?
Yeah, when you hear the presentation that Andy has on "I built," it's really focused very much like the teamwork slogan was for the city employees, and it's a good presentation, and the phrase is appropriate when you hear the presentation, and many of the city employees, I'm sure, would, would be more than glad to tell you what they built in a given day.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, B, "Consideration in action to approve the minutes from the workshop in November the 28th, 2012." Can I have a motion?
Mayor, I'll move to approve the minutes from the workshop of November 27th. On the floor?
Can I go ahead a second?
I second.
All in favor?
I'll go ahead and say.
401. Motion carries. Now to item 1C, "Consideration in action to approve minutes from the December 17th, 2012" meeting. All in favor? All opposed? Now I'm also going to move up item 3, which is quarterly updates, starting with A, the 4A Corporation. Mr. Wilson?
I think probably most of you can hear me. But pardon my voice, I've got a cold, and I'll try to struggle through this without coughing too much. The 4A Board is organizing. It's very enthusiastic, and I think they are really excited about the turn of events that are happening for our center. We still have a lot of questions, and we're going to have a lot more questions about taking over the management of the center again. We're going to have to do a lot of planning, and we're going to have to do it all quickly. We're going to have to do it very deliberately, making sure that we're making the right choices and the right decisions the first time as best we can. I don't think any of us want to go down a path with a lot of side roads to it. We'd like to work together with the council to get to our, our goal as quickly as possible. But yet, we have to do it in measured steps, baby steps if you will, and get there with a sense of we're doing the right thing first. I don't want to have to do one thing and then back up, have to redo, because we need to take it through well. So I think the 4A Board is going to be coming to the council, working with the council, on trying to find solutions to a lot of different issues. But I think we're up for it. I think we've got a good group, and I'm very proud of it. I'm very pleased with the results of the meeting. We had, I believe, on Tuesday night, the A, and I hope we can continue in that vein of track rather than go through some of the problems we've had before. The 4A Board is going to need some real sound written direction as to where we need to go. We need to restart, restart carefully, in baby steps. Any questions?
Would you like to mention who your members are in the board?
Yes. Debbie Cowley is on my board. Melissa Popple. Paige Poehn. Mark Hoffman is on the board at this time, and myself. That's five of us, and that's the full load of the board according to our volumes.
Is it a good time to ask for some volunteers to say, to help those board members like discussing?
We, one thing I were looking at, when you came up with it the other night, Jim suggested we'd already tried it one time, we're going to ask for subcommittees built off of our board, and use the board members as chairman of those subcommittees. Try and find people in the community who have certain knowledge, things that they can bring to the table, expertise in certain areas that we can draw on to better plan and make better decisions for our, our board. We don't have a quarter of the, the market of new ideas, and we certainly don't know everything there is to know about running a center. But there are people in our community and surrounding area who have great expertise in some areas, and I think we would be wise to develop that. And that's one of the things we're going to be looking at in the next couple of weeks, is developing committees and subcommittees off the 4A Board that can come to the 4A Board and say, "Here's what our recommendation is," and watch. And then we would then come to a decision on what they, they open, and see if we believe it's a wise decision, and then eventually kind of council. That also involves all the people in the, in the ownership of the convention center.
Thank you very much. Anybody have further questions?
Bill, I just want to say thank you for agreeing to stay on as president of the 4A Board, and I look forward to working with you and your whole team as we go forward. There's a lot of work to be done, and I'm sure everybody there recognizes, and it's going to take a lot of effort to do it, and I certainly appreciate your willingness to continue to serve on that board as well as the rest of the board members of the 4A.
Well, I think I've got a very good board, and I believe that if we have to do due diligence in our state and make correct decisions, we can have a very fine result.
Anyone in the audience have any questions for Mr. Wilson? Now we're going to go on with item 3B, which is the 4B and the FBDC. Mr. Wilson?
I guess I'll give you a little time to review that, but as you know, we're a new board, and I guess we've been through two, three meetings, and our fourth woman's scheduled on Monday, but basically, you know, we've, we've had election of officers, me being the electing the president, Andy Ubank as the vice president, Mary Helen Teakin, secretary, Jason Tally, treasurer, Ray Lambert, Raymond Ramirez, and Mike Carey, board members. I guess one of the main things we've been working on so far with the bylaws, they haven't updated since 1979, and there's a few things that linger in the process of change, and we're still working on it, and hopefully it's finished up on Monday. We have also appointed two committees, the personnel committee, which is Mary Helen Teakin, Mike Carey, and me, the budget finance committee, Jason Tally, Raymond Ramirez, I don't really remember. And as of yesterday, which is a big one, our executive director, director of yesterday, has tendered his resignation. So that's kind of thrown a wrench in our progress. And that's all I really have to report to you at this time. Got any questions?
What's that personnel committee?
Personnel committee, that's kind of try to, I guess it's more to write up a job description in, that's never been made, in employee contracts, so that's something this entity has never had, that's what needs to be done.
Mr. Stroger, I know, again, you've got a strong board there. A number of you and a number of issues have developed, and I, I can tell the folks here in the room that David Stroger's probably spent 40 hours this week alone on FBDC issues. They're all dedicated to helping the, that corporation achieve its goals in economic development for the city. They, they also have a long road ahead of them and a number of challenges, and I personally want to thank you for agreeing to serve certainly as president, as well as a member of that board, and every member of that board that has put in the hours and the time. I look forward to seeing the revised bylaws and hope to attend your meeting on Monday so that we can sit and watch you guys work.
Any other questions, audience? Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to go on to C, Planning and Zoning Committee. Mr. Bykon?
Good evening, all. First of all, I was elected chairman of the PNC last night. I was not there. The first meeting I don't miss, but there was a conflict I had in San Antonio, so I would present my new board members at this next meeting. The priority last night was to elect the chairman and secretary, and then to approve the professional planning services agreement, which I believe is coming up in front of you on the next meeting, Mr. Johnson?
What is it?
The agreement with, yes, we will bring it at the next council meeting before they review on the land. Do you guys prefer? That, that's the, the future land use plan, the zoning ordinance, and then the annexation plan. My understanding is this is going to take about six months, once you give them the go-ahead to spend the money on it. That's going to be our single focus for a few months. Obviously, with the moratorium in place, the rate of requests has slowed down considerably, but this is going to take a few management work with the whole planning and zoning board. I'm excited to have senior members on there, and it's going to be a great year. Any questions?
I told you, you may.
I didn't get the list from sending it, I don't have it. I wasn't meeting.
I, I know the two new members are Archim Wawon and Ray Lambert.
Right. And Terry Holly, and then Chris. But we've got the board. I just wish I'd been there last night.
I, I showed up at the end, and they were celebrating how they were managing to appoint and get you elected.
I, I had told them that we wanted the services, if, if they wanted to do so.
Again, Phil, you were, you were the designer of the moratorium and the designer of, of the need for, for a land use plan and the zoning ordinances and the annexation plan, and I spoke with you many times during that, that process and worked with a number of people as you come forward. You as well have a wealth of work ahead of you, and I want to personally thank you for your support to the community and your willingness to take the time and the position as chairman of this board as well as the rest of the board.
Thank you. I think the most exciting thing about this plan is the, the real fruition of this plan will come out right there in the long. That's, that's the idea, and it will be the birth of the next 20, 30 years. Thank you. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bykon. Okay, next we have the Parks Foundation. I think Andy and I are going to do that one.
I think they left that, just the office, on the council, that you did make contact with the, the board members?
We have our, yes, and we have our first meeting set for Wednesday, January the 3rd, so we'll be sending them a notice. Now we're going to this one.
Oh, it's the 23rd.
It's the 23rd.
Oh, right.
And they haven't had a, a meeting since 2010, so there's a few members there, so they're going to have their word cut out.
We're ready.
Here we go. Okay, next. Judge, you ready for?
Good evening, Aaron. Hi, I'm Judge Varziv, and I'm here, and this is a court for Friday to the topic of 454, I'll be presenting on the day we have passed ago, but with our municipal court activity. The municipal court, to keep you aware, the hours are still from Monday to Friday. We do close about 15 minutes, and if we're ready, sometimes we have to do it in a long distance, for reasons we can get a closer angle, we're still available, it's been in our comments, and our other one on the day of Friday. At the part time court, she is definitely, I'm there by basically in addition to the police department, we have a warrant officer, we have one of the police officers, we have nine warrants, and bailiff duty. We have four bailiffs, or these court officers in the 4A Police Department, work with us. They cover our court dates and docked dates. Our docked dates are on Monday mornings, 10:00 a.m., we have all the initial appearances in case cases, in case there are all the municipal court. We accept date on Monday, 10:00 a.m., and throughout the day. On Tuesdays, we normally have one hearing throughout the day, set up at the court. On Wednesdays, we normally have our contested cases docked, docked court, our prosecutors, twice a month. Thursday, Friday, and throughout the day, of course, Monday through Friday, we're still doing collections and processing all municipal court cases, and people can pay lines, and collect our, our money. This, that 444 that I'm providing to you is something that I do provide to the state as well. It's a, it's a little more different to the state, but in our court, court here for you, the state cases filed, if you, if you're on the back, if you're still on, the violation is filed, and this is 444, of course. The traffic cases, state law, parking, the city ordinance, everything is together, there's going to be a number of cases. There should be a amount of cases that are filed that all come from the police department, the courts by the state, the courts of the law as well, and citizens who come in and follow by the citizens as well. Then the court, you know, marking the boards of the police department. It's a city ordinance, state, state all violations, classified misdemeanors, and your traffic cases. Via second section, another via the paid events, the paid cases, those being breaks down by the state traffic and the parking violations. If you're full and if you've accepted a fine case with public that quarter, which is gonna only include cases in that quarter, because the prior cases are also handled. We have, we have a backlog, they're collecting every day on any case, there are no under this, or so I could be pursuing collection on that. The cases that are cleared, it's whether you're getting out of the cases, five, six, twenty cases in the three ninety ring, it was cleared this quarter, half quarter. The other completed cases are also cases cleared, different, with a different status, because it's a Friday dismissal, it's a Thursday dismissal, the defendants aren't entitled to bylaw. So collect court costs and some fees on these cases down throughout it. If you have any questions, if you weren't happy, you might have to say more of what types of statuses and what type of, you know, dismissals by insurance, dismissals by prosecutor, and that's at trial, dismissals at trial, a visitor, a defendant guilty, and waiver jurisdictional on our, juvenile cases that goes to juvenile court. We just have to, there are names for waivers, discretionary waivers, juvenile courts that we have in here. And they are still counted as cleared cases on our part. The, the, the law that you had for warrants, the warrants issued, those are our local, those are the higher warrants, I'm the magistrate, but in the local warrants, it's a cost. And this quarter, it was the devil, we didn't have our warrant officer, but this past quarter, and she just came on board Tuesday. So our warrant, Rhonda, full star, will be ahead now, not this quarter, this month, this quarter, we work at the police department, they organize the, the one day, the one day we'll be ahead of ownership, I think, not just, not only locally, but any of the surrounding things, so. Warrants are, right now, with the warrant officer, she'll be, her name is Christina, she'll be sending out the warrant notices, we do that as well. She'll be sending out the notices for collection. She also, we're entering into the category of year system, for fighting the drug access that happened, we're less than, we're one, they're top ten, they're in the school court. She's making phone calls, give pricing, and that goes through the court, it's all the collections. That comment is definitely, we do that every day. Yeah. Cleared warrants is dismissed, we have cleared warrants throughout that quarter, but for that, it's looking hard, because we're also working to the warrants from year tax. So we're still applying, we're still counting. The very last section of this report is our collection. That right there brings everything down, everything, and I did highlight the, the local legal pain, court costs, fees, fines, the toll. We normally pay maybe about twenty-five, thirty percent to the state, goes a piece to the state, the neighbor, the state with the city, and different costs. Some costs are to viewers in that city, and we use only for the support, the security plan, and the child safety plan. And the other court costs are the local legal, that they have, they have specific purposes as well, and I know that they need to come into the office, I didn't have enough time prepared, and I didn't have any notice that I can have everything from you. And I do have to, with the financial, I do have to meet with the comptroller to get some more information from you, so if you want to request information, I have to, the next meeting, so I can have time to meet with the comptroller. The docked court, that's, that's, that's. The municipal court, I also, I serve as a magistrate, I'm a magistrate, I'm a magistrate, I'm a magistrate, so, I'm a magistrate, and I'm on call as well at night, or if it's throughout the day, if I'm in the office, and I don't come here, I may need to judge the bill, or I'm not sure when to call me, or, I'm on the other side. And the cases that are dealt, of course, are not only the hot A and B, the hot C, the B's.
I know this is short notice, Judge, I, I look forward to the next quarterly piece of this and maybe we'll see a little bit more of the financials. And you also mentioned that there's a video, a short video put out by the state on, on the role of the magistrate. And I think that would be very informative to the council, for, for the citizens that are here. On, on these quarterly updates, it's titled that. There are a number of committees and boards that report to the council and we wanted to start this quarterly reporting process so that at least once a quarter, the boards and committees and the other departments that work directly for the city council can have the opportunity to bring the council up to speed. I know there's a couple others being, gonna be discussed, but I appreciate your time, Judge. I know it was short notice and look forward to your next presentation.
Thank you. Okay.
Does Ruth make this time there or we can just leave for the presentation because I've got to do stuff, but then we can do the other and then move back. If one is the same, we're just gonna try to do it quarterly to match the other, the other organization, the other committees.
The ordinances?
The ordinances, I visited with Cindy Nichols and like we had talked with some of the council members, there used to be a committee that was reviewing the ordinances. And it, it was organized October twenty-eighth, two thousand and eight. The persons involved at that time were Harry Kelly, DeSantico Debo, Dana Fowle, Sheila Garza, Jimmy Alvedis, Cindy Nichols, and Margaret DeOwens. The initiative was to clean up the ordinance book by checking the wording and updating the names of the officials, including updating, updating the fines of violations. Updated ordinances as deemed necessary. And the persons involved in the ordinance book project met on the following dates, October twenty-first, two thousand and eight, October twenty-eighth, two thousand and eight, December sixteenth, two thousand and eight, January twenty-seventh, two thousand and nine, February fourth, two thousand and nine, February tenth, two thousand and nine, March thirty-first, two thousand and nine, April seventh, two thousand and nine. They contracted with Dana Fowle for legal purposes and pretty much at, at that last meeting, the project was never finalized. And that's something that we have brought to the council, that our council was asked for ordinances and a copy of the ordinance book, and this is one of the issues that we're facing. We recommend, there is an action item for our ordinance committee. I was asked to come up with some recommendations and then if not, all the, the members are approved tonight, then we can at least start the process moving forward. Recommendations on, for the, the new ordinance committee to pick up where the last one left off is myself, Andy Jocelyn, Cindy Nichols. We'd ask that, we have one planning and zoning member. We'd ask that we have one council member, Judge Sheila Garza, and Griselda Cantu, who handles our, the contracts up at the front.
Can I have one more recommendation than that, Andy, to the police department?
And that's what Cindy Nichols was talking about, if, I speak with the chief to see if he wants to come in or assign one of his lieutenants or, or other staff.
Do you need that council to name down or can we?
Well, you can, you can think about it, it was just your, your presentation on the audit committee and then we can move forward and then come back to the new business to actually refer what you want.
Now we're gonna go back in order. To go up back to number two.
Uh, we, about H, three H?
Audit committee.
The audit committee, mayor and council and citizens, as of the last council meeting, this council appointed three members of the council, which would be Jim Miller, Ms. Sherry Castillo, and Mr. Eric Rodriguez, and additional staff would be Andy Jocelyn, and as a liaison, Laura Batons, who are controllers, and the audit, the auditors are scheduled to be at the city hall from January fourteenth through January twenty-fifth, for two weeks. One of the requests that they've had is if we do wanna meet the audit committee with the auditor, they prefer the daytime, so as to limit the, the funding that we have to come up with to pay them, but it's just a recommendation. If we need for them to meet, if we have to meet with them, then that's something that we can schedule to go. I know that the recommendation was the audit committee meet first and then we can meet with the, the auditors themselves.
As you explained to me, there's an interesting challenge with that because we have three council members on that committee, any meeting of that committee would subject, fall subject to the open meetings requirements and the seven to hour posting. So at best, I think, as soon as we could meet, it would be Monday. So let's go ahead and, Councilman Rodriguez, do you have, what would be a good time for you on Monday the fourteenth?
I won't be able to, I'm scheduled to be in court this for, for work.
Councilman Castillo, do you have a preference on time on Monday the fourteenth?
Anytime after ten o'clock.
I also am aware that we're gonna go ahead and have part of Ms. Wagner's group with the four B meeting on their piece. Is there a preference from city staff as to when we should have that committee meeting?
The city staff, if it's just the committee itself, we can meet whenever. If it's gonna be with the auditors, I think the auditor's requested that we meet within the second week. It's typically they get in here and try to get situated and get all the information that they need and get going.
Then let's go ahead and meet as a committee on Monday and then determine what the best time is to meet with the auditor as a committee and schedule that meeting for Monday. I have no conflicts on time, so anytime after ten a.m. according to Councilman Castillo would be acceptable.
What did Mr. Rodriguez say to you? Work full time, what time would work for you?
Maybe that time.
Yeah, I'll, we have to tell the, I'll get a big issue. Recommend the time that we?
Ten thirty would be good.
Ten thirty? Should we, councilmen members, should we set the time or?
Ten thirty is acceptable.
What about the, the new members, the citizens? Are we gonna help them, do we have to ask them what time they would prefer?
If we need to change it after the meeting, we can do that, but we'll just tentatively go with ten thirty.
Okay, very good.
Now we're gonna go to item two, presentation, the person being the employee of the month for December twenty-twelve. Mr. Jocelyn?
Thank you, mayor, council, citizens. Our December twenty-twelve employee of the month is Gloria Martinez. Gloria's been with the city since April sixteen, twenty-twelve, in her short time, assigned to the event center. She has worked at the non-vaked position of parking recreation director, Ms. Carolyn Palacios. After her resignation, we, as the city staff, decided to blow off on the position to see what direction this council wanted to head with the center. As we heard earlier with the four A, the board will be more involved and during that time, Ms. Martinez will be working with both the city staff and the board. So I wanted to make sure that, that the citizens and the council knew that she was very capable of doing that. Some of the, the things that have been happening out there are extremely positive. And as such, we've created a facility usage evaluation form that's filled out by the people utilizing the facility. Some of the stuff that's been written in there, question was, has the staff been courteous, supportive, and helpful when you called during the event? Yes, Gloria Martinez bent over backwards for us. She was so anxious to make sure everything went smoothly. The Defense of Narcotics Officer Association had a meeting today, today and yesterday, and during their evaluation, they cited many positive things and one of the ones that's, that was awesome is, general comments, finest facility we ever used, is a comment that they said, and Ms. Gloria Martinez has a lot to do with that, so.
Ms. Gloria? Could we have a round of applause for?
And three, two, one. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and this is a very, very great honor. Next, we're gonna have the information request meeting timelines, Mr. Jocelyn?
Thank you, mayor, council, and citizens. One of the, the directives that came out of the city manager's evaluation last time was that we compiled a, a method of disseminating information to the council, to the boards, and to the public. During this assigned project, we knew that we had a current resolution in place that was dated January twenty-fourth, two thousand and eight. So we pulled that resolution and started working from that point forward. And as always, the citizens know, my council knows, that my staff play a vital role in the success of any kind of directive that the council hands over. The resolution starts with number one, any items we placed on the agenda should be submitted in writing. What we came up with was an actual attached form that will be available here at city hall or on the website that can be submitted by council, by boards, and by citizens. City manager will provide the mayor and council members written information in a separate cover letter, which will be included in the council agenda package, pretty much a summary to each agenda item, so that the council will, can review that quickly and then the supporting documents will be attached. Written requests for placing an item on future council agendas should be submitted in final form, along with a request to place an item on the council agenda form to the city secretary or his or her designate no later than noon on the seventh day immediately preceding the council meeting date upon which the item will be placed. This lead time is necessary to, one, allow the city secretary and applicable staff personnel to timely and properly prepare documents and other items for council's consideration at the meeting, and two, to provide adequate time for city staff to publicly post the notice of the upcoming meeting in compliance with the state law. One of the things that, that we found, starting to work together with the new council, was that they have a lot of requests that they need to, that need to be filled. And some of them we're putting in the writing, others were just coming up and saying, just put this, or I need this information, or I want this on the, one of the things that's gonna help us tremendously is it, for it to be in writing, for us to reference it at any time. And also, so we can properly place it on the agenda and if any question arises, we've got a form that, that has been properly filled out. Yes, ma'am?
Andy, if you submit a form and you'd like it to be on that week's agenda coming up when it's timed, but there's not room for it, do you have to resubmit again or will you try to get it on the next agenda?
Yes, sir. We'll, we'll try to move, move it to the next agenda and the person submitting that for that will be notified as well.
Okay.
Four, the city secretary will prepare. Four, the city secretary will prepare packets for upcoming council meetings for use by the council and staff when the agenda item will require the city staff to prepare information and or documentations for use during the council meetings. Then the requesters should communicate their request in writing to either the city secretary or the city manager no later than noon on Thursday before the Monday deadline for submission to the city secretary for a regular meeting scheduled on the second and the fourth. This timely submission is necessary for preparation of council agenda packets for publicly posting and dissemination of applicable material. Agenda packets will be available for pickup by council members on the Monday immediately preceding the regular meeting prior to posting on the agenda. One of the issues that came out during the request was that some council members wanted to have all the supporting document before that agenda went out on the, on the website or in the newspaper or at the front of City Hall. So once I started getting calls about, well, what's this agenda item about? They would have the supporting document and be aware of what the item was to properly answer those questions. Any requester, with the exception of a council member wanting to place an item on the agenda should be sponsored by a council member or city manager. We've got forms in there. You as citizens want something on the agenda, you can contact one of your representatives or the city manager and we can sponsor that to be placed on the agenda. Number six is it's a mayor's responsibility to preside over a meeting of the city council. According, the city manager and city secretary shall provide the mayor with a copy of the draft of each upcoming agenda in writing before close of business on Friday prior to the next council meeting so that the mayor may review the draft, review the draft proposed agenda. One of the, and we detailed it as such so that we could have it once it's adopted in place for, one of the things that we talked about, if I'm not here or Sherry Pollack is no longer here, that our predecessors have a specifically written guideline.
Before you go on, maybe, go ahead, couple of recommendations on item five. Since any requester, with the exception of a council member wanting to place an item on the agenda should be sponsored by a council member or city manager so that we comply with the city charter that's put forward must be sponsored by, and it's not an option basically. And then lastly, on item six, in the last sentence, in writing before close of business on a Friday before the next regular city council meeting. Because otherwise, special city council meetings or workshops could fall in there, so we would change that.
Just for the citizens' information, this was provided to the council as always prior. We did have Mr. Miller and Ms. Castillo come in and offer some suggestions before we presented it to yourselves. We appreciate that very much and welcome the other council members to do this out.
The agendas, as we continue moving forward, we're going to try to streamline, we're going to try to improve, we're going to try to publicize everything in the council's packets on our website. That's another project that I've been tasked with to see how we can accomplish that. We need to upgrade our website to be able to accommodate that much documentation. I think that the city manager's evaluation focused mainly on information being requested from policies to just, you know, why are we doing this? And it tripled down to the boards and to some of the citizens. It overwhelmed us at the beginning because it's a change for us to have to provide that much information. Previously, we didn't do that. Ms. Pollack was the, assumed the duties of city secretary and she's still learning her job duties at that point. We've got some recommendations on the table that we will present at some of the budget workshops or the workshops next week that may assist her, our finance people and our permits department in addition to improving the service, the quality of service we provide to you. As such, we've come up with a, the forms, like we said, that we are going to publicize. And they are properly typed, can you just go through them so we can see some? Council member agenda item request, they are pretty much tailored the same. We just have different, different specifications. A council member request can be emailed to the city secretary or city manager. Citizen agenda item request will be formatted the same.
Andy, before you go on, on the agenda piece, one recommendation that I think is coming up is in addition to who, before description of item, I think we need to have some checkbox options. Is this a consideration in action? Is this a discussion item? Is this a presentation or what? So that, that can clearly help in the organizational.
And for the citizens' information, again, this is just a presentation. It's not a final draft and that's why we wanted to bring it to everybody to ask for assistance or requests or advice on how we can improve it.
The citizens' agenda request, as we did with the information request, we put some timelines in it. As I read the certification on the bottom and saying that I understand that, you know, the right to set items of the discussion of meetings and further understand that my request will not automatically be posted on the, placed on the agenda or may even be denied. Do we have a process of notifying that request or what the status of that, that agenda request would be? Does it say, hey, we'll notify you in X number of hours or X number of days or what that process would be? Ms. Pollack?
The history of that and we can put something in there is going to depend on how quickly council decides that action item, if that item needs to be put on. So we can say seventy-two hours if they wanted the next meeting.
Well, could we, you know, in the same manner that on Monday we say the council member's package is going to be ready and obviously the agenda would be set, if somebody requested an agenda item, at that point could they be notified that their request for an agenda item was or was not placed on the agenda? That we use that Monday as the trigger date for that?
Prior to the agenda being posted.
I'm going to read off the information, the request document that's going to be placed on the website. And they are broken into council member, board member and citizens. Council member information request, please complete this form with your request for information from the city of Florisville. And this is not agenda stuff, this is any information. The office of the city manager is committed to providing you as much information as possible to guide our great city forward. Request for information should be submitted on this form with any additional sheets as necessary to explain the type of information you are requesting. This is for the council member. This form may be dropped off at City Hall or emailed. Please note that you will receive a response within twenty-four hours. The response, like you said, will be done within twenty-four hours to say, yes, we've got it. It was handy for us, easy for us to get, or it's going to take us X amount of days to get there. You will be receiving council members a notice within twenty-four hours. It's got name and an address, telephone number, fax number, email address, description. Are there additional sheets of supporting material, attached, signature, date of request, accepted by, title and date accepted. I'll move to the board members, do we have some more board members in here? That was one of the questions that we had. Board members and committee members, please complete this form with your request for information from the city of Florisville. And it states the same, the office of city manager is committed to providing such information. The change from the council members to the board members is, please note that you will receive a response within seventy-two hours with information that you request, that your request has been received and timelines for completing your request. If we can expedite that, the council members don't have a request in, then we'll move you, board members forward. If not, that'll at least give you a sense that within the seventy-two hours you're going to receive notice or you're going to receive your, your request.
One addition here I recommend is, in the same manner you have been commenting for the council members that said requesting of information will be available for all council members, let's add something to that effect for all board or committee members.
And finally, the public information request for any citizen that wants any kind of information, we just follow the Texas Open Records Act, which is ten days, correct? Ten business days to receive your information. Same request, stating the same thing, signature box, accepted by, so we can always keep track who received your request and we can make sure that it gets to where it needs to get.
Andy, one question that just came to mind on this. Recently, the city published a public information request policy naming the city manager as that source for that. We probably need to ensure either amend that policy to reflect this form or kind of coordinate those two into this. Otherwise, we end up with another resolution that's talking about public information and we have this other one over here establishing another procedure. We just need to make sure that they in a lawful manner.
Any questions from the citizens? Any requests that you would like to change?
Joe, man, there's a lot of work to put together in a week's time or two weeks.
As we know it, we appreciate you very much. We, Ms. Teek and Mr. Stroger, Mr. Tally know that we have been running ragged this week and every week since then with issues, but we're going to get there, like we said. We're moving the city forward with the new council as at the wheel and that's our sole purpose.
Then is the goal, Andy, to do these tweaks and then have this resolution at the next council meeting for adoption?
Yes.
And there are items that are in red on the sheets that you have are the changes that were made from the original that were, so you received, and I just put them in red that way you would be able to easily find any changes.
With that, Andy, we're going to continue with item C, street maintenance plan update.
All right, I'll try to make it as quick as possible because we still have one of our staff members who's going to present on the allied waste refuse contract, which is something that I know the citizens are extremely interested also. This is a process, again, another directive that the council has placed on the office of the city manager and staff to come up with a ten-year street maintenance plan. We started it, we wanted to see if this is the kind of format that this council and these, and our citizens are going to be happy with or do we have to tweak it again? So we ask for any comments. Street maintenance plan for fiscal year twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. These are the three, according to our M and S master plan, were the top priority. Trail Street, Railroad Street and B Street. We are projected to collect three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in street maintenance tax for twenty twelve, twenty thirteen. I'm going to give you some basics and I'll learn myself as I go with my staff members. Rudy Vasquez, our Public Utilities Director, has been in the street department for a number of years. Thinking basics, best payment temperature is eighty-five degrees and up and it must be dry. Late April through October is the best time for construction. November through March is the best time for maintenance and drainage and patchwork can be done all year long as long as the weather is dry. Estimated cost of street crew per week, five employees, four thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. That's salary and benefits, correct? Okay. Estimated cost for equipment per hour, our loader, thirty dollars an hour, roller, fifteen dollars an hour, grader, thirty dollars an hour, paving machine, thirty dollars an hour, oil truck, fifteen dollars an hour and dump truck, twenty dollars an hour. Material wise, at this day and time, as we know, things change as we go. The costs either go up or go down, majority of the time go up. Our base is running five dollars and fifty cents per ton, our asphalt, sixty-five dollars per ton. Curbing, we've got a contractor that does curbing for seven dollars a foot. I understand that that's extremely cheap. Pine oil, two dollars and twenty-five cents a gallon, seal coat oil, a dollar and eighty-five cents a gallon, seal coat rock, sixteen dollars a ton. And the hauling fee because of the fuel prices is two hundred dollars per load. Railroad Street, we talked about, fourteen hundred block, length four hundred and sixty feet, width thirty-two feet, fourteen thousand seven hundred and twenty square feet. Railroad is a small street by the restaurant, changed a couple of names right there in that area and we know that a.
Or Martha's Court.
Go ahead. Base for that project, four thousand one hundred and twenty-five, asphalt, eleven thousand four hundred, curb, six thousand four hundred and forty, pine oil, five hundred and seven dollars, seal coat oil, eight hundred and thirty-three, seal coat rock, seven hundred and sixty-eight. Hauling cost for the base, six thousand, for the asphalt, asphalt, I'm sorry, one thousand four hundred. Total material cost, thirty-one thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars. Approximately four weeks to complete with the street employee salary, eighteen thousand eight hundred and eighty. So we're looking at about fifty thousand dollars.
But that doesn't include your equipment costs that we were talking about?
That's correct. Okay, go forward. Trail Street, one hundred block, the length four hundred and forty-one feet, width fourteen feet, a square feet, six thousand one hundred and seventy-four. And I'm going to just go quickly through the pricing. Asphalt, one thousand nine hundred and forty-five, smaller street, smaller, five thousand eight hundred and fifty, curb, six thousand one hundred and seventy-four, pine oil, two thirty-seven, seal coat, five hundred dollars, seal coat rock, four hundred dollars, hauling cost, two thousand eight hundred, asphalt, eight hundred dollars, total material, eighteen thousand six hundred and eighty-six. Approximately four weeks to complete with the street employees, eighteen thousand eight hundred and eight.
What part of Trail Street is that?
B Street, what was that?
What part of Trail Street is that?
It's a, it's a small piece of, of the road where the skate park is.
Between sixth and seventh.
Between sixth and seventh, the small street that curves. It looks more like an alleyway than an actual street, so. B Streets, fourteen hundred through seventeen hundred blocks, length one thousand six hundred and ninety feet, width thirty-eight feet, sixty-four thousand two hundred and twenty square feet. And the same thing on the price, the total of material, one hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and seventy, approximately eight weeks to complete, street employees, thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and sixty. M and S was an engineering firm that did our master plan. They stated fifteen dollars per square foot is average by hiring a contractor. Railroad Street will run us two hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred, Trail Street, ninety-two thousand six hundred and ten, B Street, nine hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred dollars.
And B Street is what, from one eighty-one?
It's like from one eighty-one.
All the way down to where?
Right there, correct, to where the school is. Option for funding was one of the questions that was asked, how are we going to fund this? Option one, we can continue to just hold our money as we go, rejecting our street maintenance tax for the future. Option two, a short-term tax note. Option three, a bond election. Option one, we said put positives and put negatives. We just wanted to put that information and then we can look at and see what's positive and what's negative on our own. Guaranteed that the money will be available, we're just collecting the street maintenance tax money and putting it into there. It will take time to save. Day-to-day operations and maintenance, maintenance and operations will need to be funded from the general fund. Currently, if the guys are working, they're patching, they're doing this or, all the material comes out of our street maintenance tax. Nothing is in our general budget specifically other than labor and the equipment, manpower and whatever equipment we have right now. What are they doing with the, some of the money at this point in time? Probably repair, patch work and then emergency. Pod for repair, patch work, and then emergency repair, crack seal maintenance, and seal coat. Option two, which was the tax notes, if we do a one-year tax note, say we know we're going to collect $380,000 at the end of the year and we borrow upfront and pay it by the end of the year. Or can we do a two-year, see if we can borrow that much money and know that we can repay that. One of the things that we cannot do, or it's not recommended, we can do, but if we're going to utilize our street maintenance tax to pay that back, we don't want to go more than four years because every four years we have to take it to the voters and say, do you want to continue this tax or not? And if you decide, no, we don't want to continue it, how are we going to pay it back? So, available quickly if we do that, one, two-year tax note. Multiple projects can be running concurrently. We stated just the first three on our master plan and that's just using city crews, but if we want to do more than that in a quicker time, maybe we can contract some out, maybe the smaller ones, the street department can do themselves. Professional crews as well as city staff, funded by sales tax and or property tax, we're looking at the street maintenance tax at this time. It has to be approved by the council if we do that. Say we're going to do a one-year tax note, two-year tax note, bring the information to then they approve it and then we'll move forward. Go ahead. Option number three, again, multiple projects running concurrently, professional crews as well as city staff, funded by sales tax and or property tax, that one has to be approved by you. Anytime we go out for big amounts of money, you know, we have to make sure that you are okay. And that's it. Too much information maybe at this point in time, but if you want less and we can give you less, if we move for the ten years and you know what it's going to take for us to project for ten years and all the information that will be incorporated in there. I know that Mr. John Rudy Vasquez from our city said, oh, it's easy to estimate, you know, how much we cost. Well, if we just put M&amp;S's recommendation, we can add that real quick in ten years, but we need to see the whole picture before we move forward.
Yeah, as I do some basic math, Andy, you know, if we look at B Street, which I believe that we add up your $124,570 and the $37,000 from the employees, we're at $162,330. And then we add in the equipment costs, you've got eight weeks and when we add up your equipment costs, you're running about $320 an hour, or excuse me, you have 320 hours over the eight weeks and say the equipment gets used half the time, we're adding about another $22,400. So ballpark, we're talking about $200,000 from the city's cost. When we look at the M&amp;S estimate for that same street, we're looking at almost a million dollars. That's a big difference. We obviously are going to have to look at these projects individually to say which ones are most appropriate for city staff to deal with and which of these projects should we be taking to a contract, you know? Of those roads that need more than resurfacing and installation of curbs, those streets that have some significant drainage issues, those roads that are going to be required to go up, so we're going to probably have to go back into this and identify those a little bit differently.
Yes, and then there's, there's always the issue, if we're going to do it right, then you have to start from beneath above. So those water lines, those sewer lines, they're old and we have to replace those, we have to take that into consideration. And that's a separate deal on our budget, of course, for the water and the wastewater. So we'll have to make sure that that's incorporated and lines are good, we can move forward on that.
Did M&amp;S do any type of cities on that, about the sewer water?
No, that's part of our master planning that we're going to do next week to say, you know, these are the things that we need to do, we need a lot of things. What are we going to prioritize before, whether it's the water model or sewer model? The first, and I just said the first thing that they said, you need to digitize your maps. We have paper maps that are updated by the guys with a pen and paper and they work, they know what they're doing, but if they leave or if I'm gone and somebody else takes over, it's always better that way, so we can move forward on that.
You know, your, your original comment to me was we were going to address some of these issues in the master planning. It's, it's obvious that street maintenance, we're going to have to, or street upgrades, we're going to have to include some in our master planning and some as part of our street maintenance planning. And hopefully in our workshop next week on master planning, we can begin to start to separate some of these. This was a good presentation, Andy Teek.
Thank you, sir. Staff always does all the work and we work on it together, they compile the information, so...
Thank you, Sherri, thank you, Laura.
Okay, now we're going to do the Allied Waste Current Review Contract, 97.
I'm Priscilla and part of my D E S department is to do the daily operations for the records contract. And in the beginning, we had a lot of issues with the mix-up of the dates changing for the schedule of days. And, but now I think I see a lot of people bringing equipment, now people know what their day is and, and, you know, they've done a lot better than that. During the holidays, Christmas and New Year's, we had another, you know, mix-up with people inputting with the holiday pick-up day. And, but now we're back to regular program, schedule, because last week they had a few of the year-long work for this year. They're doing, I mean, a lot better, right? They are very opinionated, they, they want to provide the best service that they possibly can. They welcome your feedback, they gave us an A number number that customers can call directly if they have issues. They're also having a PR campaign next month in February and we'll be having refreshments and displays and we'll be there for questions and answers if we would, you know, like to a time. I have that number, anytime you can call City Hall. Also, on that day, they will have stickers of maintenance and stuff they can provide you also if you have a handy, you know.
Thank you. One of the, one of the things that came out of this is we know there's new ones. We know. First line of communication, this young lady keeps good records of what comes in because she shoots out complaints email to the company, all email to the company. So the council member, Miller, and our mayor, Diana Garza, said, what are we going to do about it? We can't just let it go that way and hopefully that eventually it works itself out. So we did have a meeting Monday.
Monday.
At what time?
At 10:00.
This past Monday at 10:00 with a representative and say, look, we've got these problems, these people are asking questions and they deserve answers. We can give them so much, but it's better that it comes from you. The date that was chosen was February...
February 9.
February 9. We are gonna send out a flyer in our, our water bills, we're gonna work with the company to place that in the newspaper and in addition, there, we'll be out here, there, it's, it's a company putting it on, it's not the city, it's the city council's request as an obligation to the citizens. Council member, could you...
Yeah, actually this accomplishes two things and Ms. Cantu's done some wonderful work on this, but one of the things that we realized is that city staff was receiving all of the phone calls for issues with the garbage and we're not contractually obligated to do that. Our vendor, Allied West, has agreed to put in a dedicated number, so if you have an issue with garbage not being picked up, issues with the service, that you can call them directly. They have radios where they can get in touch with their drivers and that'll happen if you need a new service, if you need to cancel a service, or if you have a billing issue, those are the things that need to be coming to Ms. Cantu and to City Hall. But the one thing that we realized in this, and Ms. Cantu did some really wonderful things, is when we looked at the number of questions and complaints that we had and the bulk of that information was not understanding the service that we were supposed to be giving. And, and that's part of the fault of the city, but it's also part of the fault of, fault of the venue. What's my service rep? What day are you going to pick it up? What are you going to pick up? What are you not going to pick up? Automated service is a brand-new thing in the city of Forestville. One of the things that we hope to accomplish in this PR event on the 9th is to have them demonstrate how this works and why we need to do, set our cans a certain way. But this also gives the citizens of the community the opportunity to meet with the vendor, excuse me, and if you have issues about your home or your business, we're going to have people there to answer your questions and, and correct that. There will be city staff there, there will be members of the council there, so that if there are other issues, we can address that. And, and hopefully the efforts of Allied West or Republic will be more visible by the community and what their level of service is supposed to be will be understood by more people. But Ms. Cantu did some wonderful work and I can tell you that the, the people from Republic responded very quickly. They did install an upper break and they committed to that date and they actually jumped in and have chose to sponsor the mayor's, one of the mayor's pet projects, which was a Citizen of the Year Award. And I'm sure there'll be some more of that coming out from the mayor's office. So I, I think we've got a good relationship with them. I was excited and pleased with that and they responded very well. And hopefully now the phone calls will allow Ms. Cantu to do some other things at the city other than radioing back and forth with, with Allied West about these pickups.
I'd like to add to that for that meeting because what excited me was that they're going to bring their actual trucks out here, park them out here in front, they're going to show us how they pick them up, because not everybody's up when they're going around picking up the trash cans, except coming out and still finding them there maybe. But they're going to explain exactly how the trash can gets picked up so you can see it, they're going to have all their representatives there. If you want to add another can, it's only $5 more a month if you fill your first one. I just, we just got our second one. But they're going to be showing every little detail, which would leave no question unanswered, which is something that we definitely need.
At least they agreed besides the equipment, there's various sizes of containers that they use for very, the little blue cans that we have to very, very large dumpsters and a whole variety between and they've agreed to have the entire display of everything that they have available to you. So if you have questions about costs with that, you'll be able to get with city staff there as well.
If everyone could help spread that word. Then we'll be having hot dogs and hamburgers.
I'm sorry, mayor, what day?
February 9th and 9th.
And the one here at City Hall. But we'll be putting the information in the utility bills at the end of month, hopefully.
We'll be advertising in the rest of town.
And there'll be something on the city's webpage.
Okay, next I'm going to skip again and we're going to go to the TechStop Media Maintenance Agreement Rules and Regulations. Mr. Cantu.
For the citizens' information, again, we had a request from council and had had a request from council for some time now about signage, helping people on 181 get to the downtown area towards other business areas. And the question was, since we are taking over the median from the city limit to city limit on 181, the mowing portion of it, what can, what other stuff can we do? And I passed one of our staff members to call TechStop and find out as much information as possible so we can bring it to the council and then maybe let the citizens know what, what processes are going on.
Good evening, Mayor Cantu. I sent an email to Mr. Ben Engelhardt, he is the engineer for TechStop. Tim Moack gave me his information. I text, I asked the question, you know, they get copies of the email, about rules and regulations on what is allowed in the median, what, you know, beautification in the median, what can we do to make them look nice, and sponsorship. And he sent me the text, an email back, and I'll read you the email. It says, Monica, we cannot allow landscape features in the center median of US 181. Many landscape features, i.e. trees, shrubs, et cetera, are not crash-worthy. We avoid placement of objects within the clear zone of a roadway. The clear zone is defined as the area adjacent to the roadway that allows a vehicle to the ability to recover without having to avoid or worry about following in the center median, worry about objects. A roadway such as US 181 will have a desirable clear zone of 30 feet. TechStop cannot consider, TechStop can't consider the placement of the following in the center median of 181. Illumination or raised median, item concrete curbs at the edge of the pavement and backfill with brick pavement. You know, those are just some of the things. He sent me, I believe you all have access to, you know, there are several programs, you know, TechStop does offer several programs for cities to participate, participate to be the part of the city. You know, I contacted them about rules and regulations for the wave finance line for different things that involve the medians and he said, you know, I have the information on getting pricing and links to that to, you know, to put, where, to put the signs and how much they're going to cost and whether or not we want to go forward with it.
Oh, anything that goes on in, in the median area, one of the things that we've worked on previously was the beautification landscape that was placed in, in certain areas that were time and even north of it, but we always wanted to do a welcome sign of Forestville for the, other than the four corners. One of the issues is the 30-foot width that they, they cited in the rule, if it's not 30 feet wide or wider, it's harder to put anything in that field. But we're going to continue forward. They have committed to come in, head to city council meeting, a TechStop representative in case we've got any more questions about what we can or cannot do. The signs that I think you have proposed may be a possibility, but they're at our expense, correct?
Yes, everything that we do in the median is one to be at our expense.
A little background on this for, for the citizens, the city entered into an agreement with TechStop to take over the maintenance of the medians on 181 and 97 within the city limits and this primarily affects 181 from, right at 97, right in front of the jail, up to the hospital and then a portion on the south end of town. And one of the efforts that we're looking at is a way to allow organizations or groups to take on the maintenance of a small section of the median and then offer some signage to them. We've all seen this where we've seen signs along the highway where this section of highway is maintained by this group or that group. And certainly that would involve some, a lot more community activity in what's going on in the city, but it's also going to help to reduce the cost of doing that and buying equipment and that sort of thing. And that was the, the impetus to this request and look forward to some of the prices as they come forward in the TechStop presentation.
Do we follow up on that, whatever we got to talk to, except for any, what we have to talk to about just getting all together as a group?
Yes, sir, we're following up on that. I know that the mayor is also waiting for the congressman to come down on the meeting in regards to any kind of assistance or funding for projects that we got, but that's one that's your request, yes.
Okay, Alan, we'll be going on to the financial update, October 2012 detailed listing.
Again, our comptroller, I'm sorry, mayor, our comptroller actually executed a report to the council previously on October 1st. One of the requests came in from, from our council members that said, I need more information, i.e. Jamie Miller. So it's a positive. We, we worked with our comptroller and she put a cover sheet on this, I'm going to read it and then we can move forward. A request has been made for additional details to be included with the monthly revenue and expense reports attached will find a detailed listing generated from the accounting software. The report contains all governmental funds, proprietary funds, and component unit funds and will show all activity by line item for particular months, as it's noted in the right-hand corner next to period to views. And that one specifically goes even into more details than what they received to show what's actually coming out of that big data we're receiving. So we honor the request, we welcome the request. It created a little bit more work for our comptroller, but she's a champ and ready to work on that end stuff. I know that that's, that's something that the citizens want, we want to know where that money's being spent. And I know that the council members seated today are committed to doing that, so we hope to improve as we go. I know that the council members may ask some questions. I know that the council members may have some questions, but we will continue to work on that. Priority number one, all right?
Let me add to this. I appreciate the work that the city staff did. And I can assure the citizens of this work moving forward with the webpage enhancements and getting information out. All of this information will ultimately be published on the website before the meeting so people can review that. And so that when financial reports are made to the council and you have questions, that you'll be able to address them to the council and to staff. I can say that I spent about an hour with our comptroller after receiving this and went essentially line by line through this report and asked a number of questions. And she's done a tremendous job, a tremendously difficult job in getting our accounts and the line items correct. And it does for somebody who is not experienced in going through financial reports could be challenging. But she was patient with me and we went through a number of things. We had a couple of small recommendations. But she was very, very responsive. And I appreciate the time that city staff took with me and look forward to more of these reports as do I'm sure this is.
So the agenda item for B, consideration action to appoint members to the audit committee. I think we mentioned some names while we were on.
Sam, Mayor, I think that's my agenda item. When the audit committee was first discussed, we proposed to citizens to that. There was some discussion amongst what the city attorney is, whether they had to be residents of the city to be on a board or committee. And research has revealed through the city charter that that is not a requirement of the city charter. As a result, I would like to renominate those two citizens to the audit committee. And those are Mr. Doug Jones and Ms. Deborah Conley. Do I motion to appoint Mr. Doug Jones and Ms. Deborah Conley to the audit? They live outside the city limits, but they're in the county. Ms. Conley is the owner of Tax Time, right next to Hellshers there, operates a business there. Doug Jones is on the northern edge of the county, but does a tremendous amount of business in this community. And has been an advocate within the city and brings a wealth of experience and information to that. He's also a member of the Parks Foundation Board.
I was just wondering, you know, if you live at least in the area of the county. I'm okay with the county because we're growing. At the same time, we either have a vision of the county. I was just wondering if we're from our county or whatever. I'll make a second and go ahead and make that motion. I second.
We also have the other one to mention, Mayor. Ron and Mr. Memphis, the other one.
I'll just add a few, maybe it's just those two positions.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Miller, a second by Mr. Madonis. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, five to go. Now, we're going to go on to item C, consideration and action to appoint members to the ordinance committee.
City manager, could you repeat your recommendations for the ordinance committee?
Yes, sir. Myself, Andy Jostman, Cindy Nichols, who's in our permits office, Judge Sheila Garza, Giselda Cantu, who did the presentation on the rec. And we can put Chief Herrera or Designe. And the other two vacant ones were just a recommendation, a PMZ member if we've got somebody that we recommend, and a council member. I think we can do the council member and then the PMZ.
To be named by the PMZ. Is there a council member that desires to participate on the ordinance committee? Besides myself? Madam Mayor, I'm going to make a motion to appoint City of Florisville Ordinance Committee as presented by the city manager with the city councilman being myself and a planning and zoning committee member to be named by that committee.
Okay, I have a motion by Mr. Miller. Do I have a second?
Madam Mayor, before you take the vote, let me add one item of discussion on this thing. As the city manager talked about the maps of water lines and sewer lines and the need to digitize it, we have one map. And the writings on it have been hand-drawn in. And there are two people in the community, amongst city staff that can read that map. That is a big challenge as we go forward in master planning and planning and zoning. The same challenge exists with our ordinances. We have one ordinance book. And I discovered it, I believe it was Monday this week, in Ms. Nichols' office. One complete ordinance book. And there are a number of post-it notes and loose pieces of paper and handwritten notes attached to this book. I believe that the focus of this ordinance committee needs to not only ensure that we have ordinances that are electronically published on our webpage, but printed copies across the city among staff so that they can do their job. And secondly, as we do this process, I think all the ordinances need to be reviewed for appropriateness in today. Do we have conflicting ordinances? Are the fees appropriate associated with those ordinances? So this is going to be a big job, very much like the land use plan. It's going to be a slow-moving process, but it's something that definitely needs to be done for the city of Florisville.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, five to go. Anybody have any questions before we?
Yes, I have one for Andy. When you spoke about the pricing for the, and this has to do with the street maintenance, for the base, the asphalt, the equipment, do you have a contract with somebody that provides this? Or do you get the best pricing? Do you stay within Florisville to get that pricing? How did you achieve those numbers?
No, ma'am, we've got vendors that we've been doing business with for some time. The material-wise, the asphalt, the base and all that, we get out of San Antonio. The oil portion of that, we get out of Pleasanton. Those contracts or those areas, we try to get the best price. The bottom answer is, but we do have specific people and everybody's outside of Florisville where we get our material. Because we don't have those types of facilities.
You go out for business?
No. Although, you know, the way we purchase is at that time.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Since I've been added to your audit committee, I'm available anytime Monday. So is it 10:30 here?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Madam Mayor, before you close the meeting, I'd like to bring up the once regularly scheduled city council meeting, which I believe is on the calendar for the Thursday, the 24th. That's right in the middle of the Wilson County Junior Livestock Show, which is a big event for a number of people in the city. I know my business has gotten me committed there. There's a wealth of business the city needs to accomplish. Can we look at an alternative date for that meeting?
Is there a date that you're looking for?
Well, you said something about birthday travel plans the week before, so I don't want to propose a date that conflicts with the mayor's birthday. So I'm open to what you would propose, Madam Mayor.
Yes. What date? The 24th is the second Thursday of the month. Are you going to be committed all that week?
I'm going to be committed Tuesday through Saturday that week. So I'm open to the week before or immediately follow.
The week after will give us enough time to continue to get all our documentation. So that week is the 28th through the 31st, the Thursday being the 31st.
Could I recommend the 29th?
That's a Tuesday?
Tuesday, is there a conflict? Tentatively, the 29th is subject to the mayor's calendar. That's acceptable. Just as, not an action item, but just a discussion item so that as we go to schedule the meetings, we can. Thank you, Mayor.
With that, it is 7:30 and the meeting is adjourned.
8:40.
8:40.
Sorry about that.